A little higher. Can you stop moving? I think it's changed.
I lost the phone.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes.
I'm still not getting my desk.
Welcome.
One sec, sorry.
I'm still not getting my desk right over here.
Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Education meeting for the Huntington Union Preschool District for August 2, 2021. I have a motion to adjourn the executive session and return to public session. I have a motion from Michelle and a second from Xavier. All in favor? That's everyone. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome, everybody. Huntington Union Preschool District campus is smoke-free, and there are exits in the back and on the side and behind the stage if there is an emergency. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the reorganization meeting of the Huntington Union Preschool District Board of Education dated July 6, 2021. I have a motion, please, from Teresa and a second from Xavier. All in favor? That's everyone. And it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the meeting of the Huntington Union Preschool District Board of Education dated July 6, 2021. I have a motion, please, from Kelly and a second from Teresa. All in favor? That's everyone. There are FYIs on our agenda tonight: budget transfers, claims audit report, extracurricular quarterly reports. Any questions on those? It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the June 2021 treasurer's report. I have a motion, please, from Michelle and a second from Bill. All in favor? Thank you. And it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on July 7, 2021, and July 21, 2021. I have a motion, please, from Bill and a second from Michelle. All in favor? That's everyone. Thank you.
The big dog warrant. He just paid a lot of bills there.
That's what happens, right? It is August. Okay, so that brings us to Board Member Communications and Announcements. Anybody? Teresa?
I just wanted to commend the teachers and students who participated in the Scope Summer Program. I had an opportunity not only to see the live performance, but also walked around and saw some of the artwork that was done. And it was really remarkable what the children were able to pull together so quickly. And I can speak for my daughter. She had an amazing time. I was also blown away by the amount of student volunteers we had, who spent, you know, their day every day over the summer, four weeks of it, really enriching the lives of our kids. And they put on a pretty great performance. If anybody caught their Matilda Jr., it was... I don't know if there's a stream, live stream, a Zoom that we could put up, but it was really adorable. So I had a great time, and I know that all the kids did as well.
When I was walking around, I was talking to some of the kids about the artwork, and I was... I was... Some of the younger kids, and I was saying, "You know, when you're at the high school, you can take a class in that." And they were like, "You can take a class in that?" So that was cool. Anybody else? All right. Then to Mr. Prince.
Well, that was quick.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, Kristin, you can probably correct me if I'm wrong here, the rights to these shows doesn't allow us to...
Oh, definitely.
Stream.
Not talking about them.
Innocent question.
It's a Scope thing. I mean, it's Scope's contract, so whatever.
Okay, well, it does make sense.
Yeah.
All right, just a couple of things. First of all, timely as ever, the governor of the state of New York spoke this morning. We have been awaiting for weeks now some sort of indication of what things are going to look like in September. Obviously, things look, feel a little bit differently now than they did at the end of June, primarily caused by the presence of the Delta variant and some of the, I guess, changes in protocol that have gone along with that at the federal level. He spoke this morning in a manner that was noncommittal in terms of providing any firm mandates at this point, primarily, it seems primarily because his ability to unilaterally, in a vacuum, issue an executive order without legislative approval, that expired on June 25th. So at this point, we await a little bit more in terms of making our decision here. And the two primary topics of conversation this morning: masks and vaccines. At this point, until further notice, it looks like still remain a local decision or decision to be made by local governments. We are in touch. I do sit on the County Superintendents Association Executive Board. My colleagues and I are going to be, have been and going to continue to be in touch with the Suffolk County Department of Health Services to see what their take on the matter is, but we are going to have to make some decisions soon in terms of where we go. First and foremost, we are planning on a full in-person reopening. That does not seem to be something that anyone, including us, is willing to compromise here. It is just a matter of how PPE and how the vaccine program will be implemented moving forward. We are in the midst of planning for what would happen. There's still going to be health screenings. There's still going to be a contact tracing process unless that is interrupted by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and I don't see that happening. We will have to have procedures in place for taking care of students who are in a formal quarantine situation. And I know that there are some students that are still interested in a remote option. This will not work at this point unless something drastically changes like it did last year in terms of that hybrid environment. I'll commend again our staff, our students, our teachers, our families. This was new territory for all of us. I think everyone on board did a phenomenal job dealing with something that, and I hate to use the word because it is beyond cliche, dealing with something unprecedented, but there were aspects of that that are, in our minds, unrepeatable in terms of taking care of kids, in terms of their education and the instruction that they're provided. So that's where we are right now. I will continue with my communications. I am trying to, the second I hear something, the second something comes out that may impact what happens here, I'm going to communicate it. I'm going to communicate it accurately, and I'm going to communicate it in blunt fashion if need be, because I need our families to know exactly where we stand. I need our staff to know where we are going come September. And I wish I could give you every answer at this point, but I cannot. Some other things that we are facing that may impact the September reopening. We did receive a communication from our transportation provider that there is a bus driver shortage. That does not mean we will not be able to transport children to school on a daily basis, but we're going to have to look at some of the other things that we use transportation for and work them along with some of the other districts that are serviced by our provider. So that is something that we're actively watching. I don't know if there's been an update to that. It hasn't, but we are going to be in ongoing communication with Huntington Coach and any other providers that are involved in our transportation process.
Jim, did they indicate if that was just Huntington Coach phenomenon or if it was...
No, that is a statewide phenomenon, and I actually gave you the names of some other companies that are experiencing this, but they communicated it fairly directly, and we've already been in touch with some neighboring districts to make sure that we're not... I mean, honestly, my concern is here, but you don't want any child shortchange the opportunities because the bus is not there.
Right.
And we need our buses.
Right.
The other thing that has come up in a couple of different contexts are supply chain issues that are impacting school lunch, that are also impacting, believe it or not, some of our school supplies. Not necessarily here, but these are things that I'm trying to stay, we are trying to stay on top of this as best we can to, I guess, be proactive and to predict the types of things that may impact us moving forward, but there are some shortcomings that have been presented in terms of both food and supplies. I don't see anything impacting us yet, but we're going to keep an eye on that certainly moving forward. I'd like to commend our Facilities Department and the folks doing our capital work around the district we've done and inordinate amount of work. We presented this at the last meeting. It continues. The campuses look, they look great now. They're going to look even better come September. The things that are happening here are going to be enjoyed by students, staff, families in Huntington for years to come. Please take a look at the presentation made at the last meeting. Just take, certainly take a look at the school campuses upon return to September and new playgrounds. Obviously, the facade of some of the buildings, new signage, lots have been repaved, resurfaced, restripped, a lot of athletic improvements, fields, tennis courts. The side of this building, where it was a gravel parking lot, is now paved over and process of putting up some outdoor courts for kids to enjoy. A lot of work has been done and will continue. The roof in this, in this building toward the gym area is a work in progress. That'll be done as the year begins. The auditorium at Jack Abrams has been completely gutted, will be rebuilt by September. Again, it seems endless, and the little things are the things that make the difference. It's just the perennials outside, removing some of the trees that have been there for ages, cutting back, doing some pruning. We're trying to beautify these campuses as much as possible. We want, we want a sense of normalcy here, and we want these kids to really take part when they come back into their school buildings, as well as our staff members.
There's a lot of photos on social media if you want to check them out.
I'm trying to stay on top of that as best I can as well. So yes, please, please keep in touch via social media as often as you can. Teresa mentioned this. I'd like to thank Mr. Reynolds and the folks at Scope for a tremendous summer arts program. It always goes quickly every summer. It seems that as soon as we begin, we're having that finale that ended on Thursday, the 23rd. And I see Diana here. She's running another phenomenal extended year program. They have the farm here on Friday, which is always a crowd pleaser. The kids thoroughly enjoy interacting with the animals from top to bottom.
I think we have Mad Science on Friday.
Mad Science is coming Friday?
That's the plan.
Excellent. And that plan will, those dreams will come true. But thank you to Diana for really doing yeoman's work in terms of making sure that everything is running smoothly, from daily health screenings to ensuring that every child has what they need throughout the program. We also have a full slate of intramurals running this summer, so thank you to Mr. Hoops for coordinating all of that. And we also have a number of kids who are participating in either enrichment or credit recovery at the Western Suffolk Coast Sea sites or virtually. And at this point, time goes quickly. We are currently planning on, we have a number of new staff members, a teacher orientation, administrative workshops, superintendent's conference day will be here before we know it. We are actively planning and getting ready for the September opening, which actually starts now, if it hadn't started two months ago. But thank you all for being here tonight, and we look forward to as smooth an opening as we can make it.
Okay. So that brings us to our first public commentary. Just quickly, public commentary is, the first public commentary is first for those topics, which are items for discussion and action. If time is remaining after those people have spoken, you may speak on any topic except for naming personnel or student issues. You need be a resident or a staff member of the district to speak, and you have three minutes each. If you would like to speak, please come to the microphone. Okay. There is another public commentary at the end if you think of something as we go. That brings us to our items for discussion and action. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt revised policy 6120, equal employment opportunity.
Want to take a motion?
Yes. I have a motion, Michelle, and a second from Xavier. Comment?
I'm just going to hit them all at once, then you go through them one by one. These have all been vetted by the Policy Committee. They sent me back with a few charges just to rehash and re-review with the counsel, with our attorneys, just to make sure that there was consistency among them. Again, they pointed out some differences that were connected to the specific statutes that these policies are connected to, but the idea here was to take these policies and kind of have them coalesce around the new Title IX amendments. These may change shortly, but we want to remain as current as possible. So the things that we talked about in the last Policy Committee meeting, the majority of those items are in here, and the red line version is a further red line version from the initial review.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
These aren't going to be public, so...
This isn't the first time that we've seen this, but...
These are second reads.
These are all second reads, right?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean you can't have a question if you do. All right, then, all in favor? That's everyone.
That's 6130.
6120.
6120.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt revised policy 6121, sexual harassment in the workplace. I have a motion, please, from Kelly and a second from Teresa. Same explanation as you just gave, right? Does anybody have any specific questions on this policy?
I need some, I'm sure any of these are required policies, and why are they coming up together? They all flow from changes made to a policy that's already been approved, and that's related to Title IX.
Right.
So they're all referenced, Title IX is referenced in each one of these policies.
Right. Okay, then, all in favor? That's everyone. Thank you. And it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt revised policy 7531, sexual harassment of students. A motion, please, from Michelle and a second from Tom. Any questions on this one? All in favor, Mike? That's everyone. I feel like we have a score. I feel like we're in a musical.
I will tell you, I don't mind.
Okay, it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt revised policy 7580, dignity for all students. A motion, please, from Teresa and a second from Xavier. Do you have a question, Tom?
No.
All in favor? Sorry, I saw your hand up. I wasn't sure.
That's right.
And you don't have to raise your hand to get the question.
Okay.
You know that. I don't know why I thought, because you were raising your hands. That was my fault, sorry. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt revised policy 7583, hazing of students. I have a motion. Now, Tom's afraid to raise his hand.
There you go.
I have a motion from Tom and a second from Bill. Any questions? All in favor? That's everyone. Thank you. Now, now I got it.
There you go.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education adopt revised policy 8130, equal educational opportunities. A motion, please, from Kelly and a second from Michelle. Questions? All in favor? That's everyone. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education adopt revised policy 8220, career occupational education. A motion, please, from Xavier and a second from Teresa. Questions? All in favor? Thank you. That is all the policies.
Thank you, folks. I will be grabbing the Policy Committee, regrouping shortly, working on the next group, so...
Grab them appropriately. We just, you know, did the sexual harassment policy.
Really?
Ms. McCoy. Oh, look at that. I looked the wrong way, too.
I looked that way.
You were looking that way. It is upon recommendation... I'm sorry. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve CSC CPSC submissions as delineated. I have a motion from Kelly and a second from Bill. All in favor? That's everyone. Thank you. That brings us to you.
Okay, this evening, I am asking the Board for approval. Personnel items on schedules 135, 689, 10, 13, 15, 16, and 22.
A motion, please, Xavier and a second from Tom. All in favor? That's everyone. Some announcements, I assume.
Okay, so somewhere it's an active hiring time.
Take a deeper...
I know that the last meeting, we very happily welcomed a number of new staff members. I'm going to start, and there really is no order here, but I'm going to go in terms of the number of, number on the schedule, what I'm going to start with. It has been a lengthy process through which we now have a new principal of Woodhall Intermediate School, who just happens to be sitting in the audience tonight. I'm Mr. Scott Ostrin. Which is a request that he made. This is not, I promise you, this is something that he authored. This is not anything... But obviously, he cannot, as much as I think he probably can, he really can't run two buildings. So this evening, I am beyond thrilled to welcome Ms. Jill Amos Hurwe as the new principal of Southdown Primary School. Jill is a sitting principal and will have to provide a degree of notice starting tomorrow. We did very cordially and professionally steal her from elsewhere. We are beyond excited to have her here and wish her a long, healthy, and happy career in Huntington. And obviously, I know it's a degree of comfort knowing that you have a true professional to work alongside, you'll be happy with all the folks in this district, but, you know, I know Scott is always available for questions, but that, we're a team here, and we welcome you to it this evening. So thank you for being here and thank you for joining us in Huntington. Okay. We have a number of new teachers on the schedule tonight, and this is probably going to continue into the next meeting, but joining us at the elementary level, I believe at Woodhall, Carly Clemente. Carly is not completely new to the district, but certainly new to the teaching staff. Welcome, Carly. Joining us at the elementary level at Flower Hill will be, she's not here this evening, she is a more recent sign-on, Patricia De La Torre. Congratulations, Patricia. Joining us, a couple of new librarians this evening. First, I'm trying to remember who's where, but at the elementary level, Julie Duher. And also, in the school media specialist librarian area, Catherine House. Joining us at Huntington High School in the area of guidance, Daphne Marsalyn. Joining us at the elementary level, I believe also at Woodhall, and if I'm incorrect, know that we'll get it right, Rosemary Rivera. Congratulations. In the area of art, at Finley, Jessica Sims. And we have a couple of moves being made. These are people who are here that will be occupying new positions, so I can acknowledge them this evening. Last year, for a number of different reasons, partly financial, partly logistical, the deans were shifted back. They were excess to move back into their initial teaching positions, but we are pleased to welcome back to dean's positions both people who were excess. So Julian Watts will be joining the crew at Huntington High School, and Jessica Rivera will be actually joining Finley as a new dean. And we are, we are looking at these deans as student support advisors. I know that the term dean sometimes takes on that, that whole school type connotation.
Discipline thing.
But these, yeah, these are, these folks are here to support kids, and that's how, that's how their roles and responsibilities are laid out, and I am fully confident that both of these people are fully capable of doing what's right for all of our children. So we welcome them back into their positions. I want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Just schedule nine.
Schedule nine. Is that on here? Can't see through masks. Also, over the summer, there are a lot of tenure recognitions, primarily teachers who start with us at the beginning of the year. They are completing whatever that final year in their probationary period is. They're completing a June 30 of that fourth year, or third year, depending on if they were tenured elsewhere prior to. There are some in-betweens. The person I'm about to name, and I have a right hand and a left hand, this is, this is a third hand for me, and has done nothing but pristine and outstanding work. He's also become a trusted colleague and friend, not only to me, but to so many across the district. He is a wealth of information. He is a true professional. He is somebody who has so many bright things ahead for him, but I can't say enough about what Chris Hender has done, and tonight, we do the little thing that we can do by simply granting him tenure. So congratulations, Chris. That was very loud, by the way.
I meant it to be loud.
Yeah, the only, I think the only other thing, two, two other recognitions tonight. I'd like to congratulate, and I should have mentioned this to her, that I was going to say this tonight, but it'll be recorded. Science teacher at the high school has recently, and I know she has, you know, she has mixed emotions about this, I'm sure, but Dame Forbes will be leaving us. She has secured an administrative position in the Nassau County School District, so I know this is a bittersweet time for her, but she is, she is a fixture at Huntington High School, but congratulations to Dame, and we wish her nothing but the best moving forward, so... And tonight, we also recognize the longtime service of Mercedes Mercy Painier, who's retiring this evening, will come on the agenda tonight, she retires. So we thank her for her dedication, her service to the district, to the kids of Huntington, and wish her very well moving forward. All right, there are a number of other things on here I would like to welcome. I don't know if she's here this evening, but we're still in the process of filling in nurse slots, and we were able to secure, or happy to welcome Kelly Clovischutz as the new nurse at Huntington High School. Did I miss anything? Okay. That's why he just got tenure. This is a great place. Enjoy every day and wish you the best, obviously, come September for many years to follow.
Yes, welcome. Welcome to the family. And that brings us to Dr. Eckert.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through P on this evening's business agenda.
I have a motion, please, from Michelle and a second from Kelly. Any questions? Xavier, you have a question, I think, right?
I do, I do have questions. On the L, business facility users, who's Mr. Robert Costa and who's Mr. Scott Gusteroff?
Do you want me to answer, Jim?
That's a, that's a great question. Go ahead.
Okay, so these are two residents that would like to use our parking lots for an overflow at their wedding, so they wanted to be able to park in there, I think it was, I don't remember which one, Flower Hill, Southland?
One was Flower Hill, one was Southland.
Yeah. So they asked permission to become a facility user to have our parking lot as a parking overflow, but I did send a communication to them that they would be placed on the board as a facility user, but I will not accept at this point in time their request to use our facility until we're closer to the event, so we could see what the status of the climate is. So that's what they want to do, but they received a letter from me that they'll have to wait until we get closer to the event.
And they did provide the requisite insurances.
Oh, they will have to. Yes.
I just wanted to, I knew that, but just to make it clear, because these are residents of the community.
And they're getting married and want to use our parking lot.
Which we would typically honor, but obviously, the circumstances surrounding, we're going to wait a little bit longer, but they do have to provide a degree of insurance that has to be vetted through our facilities office before this happens.
And is it one-time use?
Yes.
Let's hope the marriage lasts a long time.
I was going to say, I was going to say that. Hopefully, it lasts.
Anytime, Xavier, anytime anybody is approved as a facility user, every single time they use the facility, they have to be separately approved by Dr. Eckert's office.
So technically, if there were to be a second event that he needed the overflow, one of them needed the overflow parking for, they wouldn't have to come back to the board, they would request it administratively.
Did you have any other questions?
Nope.
Anybody else? Then, all in favor? That's everyone. And now, Xavier, do you have announcements?
Yeah, we have some more donations. You just can't thank the community enough for their generosity. And we're going to start today with one that was beautifully put together, was a donation to Friends of Jack, by Friends of Jack Abrams in presenting a donation of a memorial plaque honoring the late Jack Abrams. The donation has a value of 36,250. That's 3,625, and I actually saw a rendering of it. It was beautiful.
It's beautiful.
Who was?
It's beautiful.
Who was?
The second one is by Mr. Claudio Gomez. Mr. Claudio Gomez would like to donate labor and materials to build five Adronex chairs for the courtyard at Huntington High School. I think I'm going to steal those.
That's actually an Eagle Scout project, so...
Mr. Gomez will build and donate these chairs as his Eagle Scout project. This donation has an approximate value of 1,250. We have another donation by WPW Growers. They're presenting a donation of flowers and mulch for the flower beds in the front of Huntington High School. I think we probably can see those tonight. The donation has an approximate value of $600. And then finally, we have a donation by Ms. Samantha Wussman, is presenting a donation of Wurlitzer Upright Piano, serial number 782310, to the Huntington High School Music Department. This donation has an approximate value of $1,000. Thank you for everybody's generosity.
And Xavier, you're a terrible criminal if you announce your theft before you.
Well, I'll go to you in case I get in trouble.
Well, then, you're definitely in trouble.
Then I'm definitely in trouble.
I'll attach the rendering of the plaque, if that's okay, because I think it really did come out beautifully. There are a number of people to thank there, and there will be a planning of a ceremony in the fall, over a weekend, to have family come out, so it can be formally dedicated. It will be situated, we're going to find the perfect location for it. It'll be situated in the lobby of the Jack Abrams STEM Magnet School. Give me till tomorrow and take back, take a look back at this item, and you'll see the plaque rendering. It is absolutely gorgeous. Also, to be acknowledged tonight, we did, I'm happy to share that we have settled, a memorandum of agreement was ratified tonight by the Board with the UPSU AIDS Monitor's Assistance that actually dates back to 2019 and goes through June 2021. Negotiations will begin again, but we're happy to have that ratified on both sides at this point.
Yes.
Now we look forward.
Thank you for the hard work on that. Okay. That brings us to our second public commentary. Same rules apply. If anybody has thought of something they would like to say? Come on, Jenny. Okay. Do we have any closing comments from Board Members?